Good morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
In trench.
Sorry. Good morning, it's April first, not April 1st, it's April 1st. We're at the mayor's conference room at nine o'clock in the city county building. This is a special meeting of the board of city commissioners. We'll call the meeting later. Hello.
Mr. Markport here.
Commissioner's anchor here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Three.
Here.
Commissioner Schmitz.
Here. We have one item on the agenda is to discuss the dismark events and the next steps. Now that we, amidst the transition, I would call it, transition will probably take a while. But we have to figure out how we can move forward if you try to make us as a better community in the future than we are at the moment. So we have significant decisions that we have to be able to make sure that Amanda has support for, including the ability to book events. It may or may not be what she's been most strong at. I don't know for sure. She can answer that better than I can. So we would certainly have some opportunities or solutions regarding that. It could be temporarily see if we contract with an entertainment facilitator entity. I know that previously there had been people reaching out to the city over the last several years that they would probably offer some of those solutions. I also need to be able to start bridging some of the issues that were identified during the subcommittees findings. And so that's what I see as some next steps forward as a commission. We need to provide some guidance. So we can't just wait around for days and weeks on end or we're going to find ourselves in the short end of the stick. There has been an event that occurred last week that has probably caused even further division down the event center. Not probably guaranteed it has. And that is not appropriate. It was made aware on Thursday of a meeting that occurred on Wednesday. And there have been further complaints of retaliatory acts as a result of that meeting. And we.
Stop right there. So it's my portfolio.
We're going to get to that commissioner.
So I had the meeting on Wednesday morning down there.
Yep.
And I thought it went very well.
That is not the feedback that came back. I did not, I did not elicit the communication. It came back through our human resource department, which is the department that is to receive that information. And there are significant individuals who are in the operational side of the event center, which is what we need critical to be able to host, take events on and keep them happy are very unhappy. Very unhappy.
I am completely taken back by that because I thought that meeting went very well and had a couple of conversations after the fact. The people thanked me for coming down and having the conversation.
Where'd you get that from?
I talked to, Tony came up to me and Richard came up to me after the fact.
Richard is certainly one of them who was not happy.
He tapped me on the shoulder and said, thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Well, I'm just telling you where I'm getting the feedback from that's come through it, human resources, which is very disturbing. Plus.
And we addressed a couple of issues that they had at the meeting and implemented a couple of changes at that day.
So I'm going to have to call him again because she received the information. So Leanne or Janelle, one of you.
And retaliatory, there was, there was the comment to the whole group was to, today's a new day. The Wednesday morning was a new day. And we have to do the best that we can with communication to move forward. And that was, everybody agreed upon that. So I would love to have this conversation.
And you received your report, so.
Yeah. I had, Mayor Commissioners, I remember I had all the members going inside expressing concern over the meeting and the messaging that was given. I asked him to write up his notes and he did write his notes up and I handed those to administration. And basically the message they were given was whatever comes from the sales office from Sarah and Amanda and Kelly goes, we're not making any changes because we're not losing any customers. We can't set any parameters for, you know, when they can make changes. He said, he said that you told him, well, you think you're busy now, wait till you've got these plans. And he said, we're not complaining about the events. We just want to be able to safely and accurately do our job. He said that the conversation down the meeting between you and him and that he had some questions about work hours for people on the front of the house. And you told him that that was not his concern and that, I'm just paraphrasing.
Sure. And that's exactly heated. I wouldn't even call it heated. I mean.
He also said that he completely ignored Robert Trimble, who is a member of management and did not even acknowledge him as a decision maker. And after the meeting there.
Robert didn't say anything during the meeting.
I'm just telling you what was reported to me. He also said that there was a meeting afterwards with you and Amanda and Robert where he was told that he will not be throwing that maintenance position. Because the center has to start saving money.
That was it then? That conversation happened? Yeah, it did. That was nothing, nothing personal. It was just that we have to, we have to, and I was going to bring it up during the meeting today.
Just recording.
That is not, that is, I'm sorry. That is completely 180 degrees from what happened in that meeting. I never once said, I never once said in that meeting that whatever the sales team says is what happens. We talked, I bet we talked 45 to 50 minutes about communication and how we can make communication better. We talked about the functionality of the building and how the functionality of the building, not the people that do the work, but the functionality of the building hinders some of the efficiencies within the people who to do the work. The EBMS software that's, that's used to keep notes between what happens during the events and what, and information that's brought back after an event's done, like say a year in the, so the year in the future, there's only two people in operations that have access to it. And I specifically said, we have to have more people in operations to get that, so we can have more of a flow.
They had asked for like a timeframe, whether it's a day, two days, week where no changes could be made before the event. That was the primary thing they wanted. And they were told with absolutely no uncertain terms are any changes can be made. Because their issue is they're having to reset multiple times and they're worried about safety for their employees and being.
Safety was never, was never brought up. And if anybody brings up anything with safety for me, I would absolutely err to the side of gosh for the safety. Did not put, did not make any comments to put anybody at risk, none. There was, there was conversation about making, to see if they could, they could have a hard break as to when that would happen. And we said, I said, we'd look into it. I never said no to anything. In fact.
Well, again, communication is two way street and that was the takeaway according to what he gave me. And he said it was a very deflating meeting for maintenance. He said they've been through a lot of months of hell and they're just really defeated right now. He also said that you said, we're here to unite and if you don't like it, there's the door.
I never said that. Never said that. Nope. That is an absolute lie. I never said that. That meeting, that hour and a half meeting, whatever, however long it took was a, was a meeting on congratulating them of the work that they do. It was, I am unbelievable. That is a lie, flat lie. Not one time did I say, hey, there's the door for anybody. I congratulated him on his retirement for crying out loud.
We've got the pages notes and we've got division.
And I'm just what has been reported.
Yeah. You know what? And then it's reported and here's this, it's reported to you on Wednesday. And today I get, I get curb walled and slapped along the face. Hey, this is what we heard. When the hell do I get to tell my side of the story?
Commissioner.
I'm going to flip out here in about 2.8 seconds. So I am completely disappointed again that a portfolio holder doesn't get the information that you guys get in a timely fashion. And then nine o'clock on a Monday morning, here it comes. Brace yourself.
Commissioner, have you inserted yourself as the co-director down there actively? You have, that has not been authorized by this commission. And that's what it feels like. You've held meetings down there constantly. And your, your job is not to make employment decisions at all. It is guidance and be the conduit. We have stepped across the line. We had two reports of people who have very high ethical standards in my opinion, one who's from outside the report, outside of the entity, who clearly stated, we have issues down there, including division between, as you've referred to, at the front of the house and the back of the house, which is driving me freaking nuts.
I said the same thing in that meeting on Tuesday.
Because the people who are in the operational side actually make everybody else look good. Because they're the ones who get the job done when the act comes in. They're the ones who make the acts feel good.
I wouldn't disagree with you, wouldn't it? In fact, I acknowledged that on Wednesday.
Well, that is not the messaging we're getting from multiple points. I heard about this on Thursday afternoon. If you don't think my stomach has been turning off weekend, you're, you're wrong. I would have called a meeting on Friday if I could have pulled it off, but we were closed on Friday. Remember, the city offices were closed Friday. So I found out Thursday afternoon, the earliest I can get a meeting scheduled was to, it just happened that we had another meeting that got canceled. This is a public top conversation. And we're at a point where we need to move forward. And we've got to make sure that the commissioner who has that department and their portfolio is not too close to the situation. And I believe that is the case currently. If there's anybody else in this room, commissioners that disagree with me, I know one will, but I'll bet you there's a couple that agree with me. They're not in the room, they're outlined. I suspect that is the case because they're the ones who are part of that fact finding committee. And we totally disregarded what they did.
I don't, I disagree with that. Some of the things that we've worked on have.
No, we totally disregarded what they did. Findings of fact that they had and the conclusion they had, we completely disregarded. We ignored them.
If I could jump in. I guess I want to say that I can understand where everybody's at in this position is where I'm trying to as best I can. I guess I would agree with the mayor in a lot of his points in the sense that I felt like Commissioner Connolly and Gordy and I did a lot of work and spent a lot of time. And it's not to say that that doesn't mean that Commissioner's anchor doesn't spend time down there and that like the things that he's worked on isn't valuable. But I just feel like there seems to be so much miscommunication and like, I, I don't think that the miscommunication piece was a Charlie Jesky problem. I think that there's a lot going on down there that needs to be worked on. And I just don't know how we move forward and we do it in like a seamless way where we're not having issue after issue because people are hearing one thing or they're saying one thing and it's being interpreted one way. And I just, I, there were so many things during that fact finding commission where I was like, if we could fix X, then this would move forward better this way. If we could do this, this would move forward better this way. I know that every commissioner sees those things. I just think that something has to change in order for us to be able to make those changes. Because like the committee wasn't able to do them. So I, like, I think that we're at a point where we need to make some pretty big decisions because otherwise nothing's going to change. Like removing the director and then operating similarly is, is not necessarily the answer. So I, I'm, I'm struggling with the like kind of he said, she said stuff going on. But at the end of the day, like changes have to happen and we need to move forward. Otherwise the last six months were for nothing, which is kind of already how I feel. Because like the mayor said, we gave a presentation, we spent a lot of time on it. And basically we ended up just having to compromise anyways. So I mean, I, I think everybody in the room is frustrated, but I just wanted to, to say like, I can understand both sides of it at this point, but we need to decide how we move forward.
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Markport. So with the fact finding, I would, I would say that there's a lot of things that came to fruition through there. I was not against any of the changes that needed to be made down there. How some of the process that to get where we're at as far as on the director's side is probably the main concern that I had. But as far as some of what the fact finding commission had found down there, some of the issues or the policies that are in place, you know, I, I was all for that being changed. And what you guys, as far as us, you know, dismissing any of that, I don't think that was my thought process as far as dismissing anything with the understanding that we do need to change something down there. What that is, it's going to take a monumental ass to be able to accomplish that. And I don't think we can accomplish it in, you know, three, four, five, six months. There's some things that we need to change or some things that are working on being changed as far as I, I know from the meetings and stuff that we've had as the board of city commissioners. It is frustrating to a little bit where if there is a commissioner that feels that they weren't notified, but understanding though, Mary, you said we were closed on Friday, so there's only so much time a person can kind of get in. But I think at least a phone call as far as some of the things that had transpired. I think this clearly shows that we definitely have a huge communication issue down there. And also within our own offices as far as how do we, how do we move forward? One of the things that you know, we need to happen is, you know, it needs to be somewhat fluid so we can, you know, we can get acts and stuff like that in. I don't know for sure how any wholesale changes is going to help or benefit that. I think we have to do that incrementally. I'm just trying to think if there's ever been an issue that I've been involved in the past that's come to some discussions and some of the angst that we've had within the city offices and with a department. And that's what's really frustrating. I think that you know, any one of us usually when, if we have a meeting with, with our department, you know, I don't necessarily let Jason know all the time with police or fire, but I will let the director know, you know, if I need to meet and stuff with them. So I don't know for sure if we need to change something there, but and all those decisions or all those discussions, I wouldn't necessarily, it's all personnel related, but sometimes it can be. But then if there is a personnel related issue, then the city attorney and HR normally knows about what that issue is or what that discussion is prior to as well. So I don't, this instance, I have no idea how we're going to fix it or how, other than just better communication and the reason why that it wasn't, let a commissioner know right away that there was, that there was an issue, especially if he had the meeting with staff and just trying to, from Commissioner's anchor's point of view, trying to bring everyone together to have that conversation of what's, what's next. And I don't know for sure. I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't say how someone would have got that construed with what report that's coming forward. But that's, that's concerning as well. So I don't, I guess I just rambled, Mary, and didn't make a whole lot of sense. But I mean, I, I don't know for sure. We definitely have an issue. We definitely need to get something done down at the event center. What that is, I, I don't know. We have to have a plan laid out and that's one of the things hopefully that we discussed a little bit today. And as for the meetings and stuff that we've had before with the, you know, with the subcommittee and what they found, I acknowledge there was some stuff that came before the budget media as well, that they wanted Amanda and her team at the time. And the former director came through and there's just some stuff that we just couldn't throw money in at the time. Not that saying that there wasn't something that needed to be done, but we charged them to try and work through some of those different issues. So I still think that some of that prior issues or prior concerns and some of those issues that, you know, came up then is, is still within us as the commission as a whole on, on the whole budget side of it too. So I don't think that event center is totally to blame on, on some of those issues. It's not that they didn't come before us and ask, but I think it's, you know, where do we, where do we put those dollars that, and it is an enterprise fund. We have to keep that in mind too, on how, how those monies are are being spent. So I guess I just have a lot more questions now than what I did before. And the concerns are there, but I don't think we just, my decision on, on how I voted and how we came to where we needed to be with the former event center was not dismissing what sub, or fact finding subcommittee did. I think it helped in some of the decisions and then what those possible next steps are. It's my two cents.
Commissioner Connolly, I can't see.
Yeah, I know.
In my regard, I sat down and I, to clear my thoughts and things, I wrote an entire history as I understand it of the events that have occurred since my exposure to this topic. And then previous information that I compiled. And I was up till three o'clock in the morning. Turned out to be a little in the six and seven page area. And I guess the first and foremost, when there's a lot of upheaval or dysfunction in the say medical area and things, we get to the point where, there's always questions of trust. And the way that we have to overcome it because people rely on us for some very delicate times is the context that I'll put it in. We just make sure that say when we go into patient care and things, that there's always two people. So there's somebody there to verify. Because when you're dealing with dynamic situations and a lot of personalities, it's really hard to know the difference. And maybe on the short term, that's what we consider here is, is that there is no shortage of finger pointing that's going on in this topic. And it's not helpful. Because if we're not there, we can't define the differences. So on the short term, what I would say is, is that since it's not a matter of quorum, if there's two of us at any of these meetings, then say down at the event center, that would be a way of checking and balancing because of the, what we're trying to overcome to get to that next step. I also, in writing it out and seeing different conversations online and things, I'm hard pressed not to lean towards, at least on the short bit of looking towards a management organization, just because the community needs to breathe. I've had a lot of people talk to me and question the integrity of people. And I've, some of the people that are being targeted as far as integrity, that has not been my experience with them. And that's why defining the differences, I hold that a high standard, is because outside of trusting one person over another during situations that I haven't been part of, that's fraught with air in my experience, if that makes any sense.
You can't see, but you've done, so I'll just, I'll just expand a little bit too. Because I mean, during that west region of that state tournament, I, I mean, I helped carry pop for, again, logistics of that building are difficult. I mean, Commissioner Cleary can attest to this and just working the concessions too. They're, they're just, you gotta have so many people to move things from A to B all the time. And it just, it hinders efficiencies. Not, not again, not from the staff or anybody like that. It's just the functionality of the building. The, it is very, very evident to me too, that we are short people. And, and the decision to not replace Richard wasn't a knee jerk reaction. It was, he's, he's retiring and he's got to run out his time. It wasn't, in fact, I said to, to Robert, it's not, it's a now issue, it's not a future decision. It's just a, a, Richard got that information from Robert because the only three that were in the meeting were you and I and him. So I don't know if that message didn't get relayed all the way to him either as to what the plan was. Because June and July, they come into their, their slow time down there. I mean, I am just completely taken back by what just happened this morning because that is not how the conversations went. And I under, you know what? Mayor, I completely understand your anxiety over the weekend because I would have, I would have been sick myself. Absolutely. But that was, that is not, that went, I apologize for getting a little heated, but that, that was, I'm, I'm shocked by that.
Again, I only have what was reported.
Yeah. And I.
And it was late, it was Thursday afternoon.
And come, it's coming into the day.
Well afternoon when I got it, the information.
Coming into the day, I thought we were going to talk about a 30, 60, 90 day kind of look ahead, what we had. One of the things I did mention in that meeting is that I wanted to talk to the sales staff and see if we could, because we don't have a big ticketed event, if they could find a wow factor type thing for later in the year. We haven't even had a chance to discuss that conversation. I mean, I will admit I'm a very hands-on type individual, but do the same thing with all my other portfolios too, if I can think. This one did this during, due to the circumstances, I have had to be more hands-on than I would, than I want to be. I'll completely agree with that.
So that should be flowing through our city administrator, to be honest. That's, that's the person who has been promoted by our commission to be the CEO of the organization.
Well, for a while we didn't have one. We just had an acting one.
Well, I have one now and he was acting and he certainly could have been involved. And that's, that's very disappointing. That should be the way it is for every department, frankly. He is the person, she is the person, whoever sits in that chair, that's their job. They're to give the guidance, they're to then come top. And if there's something they see that that department needs that they gotta have support for, then they should come to us and ask, to the commission. We need to do this. We gotta help this department, whichever department it is, I don't care, it doesn't matter. Water, sewer, sanitation, it doesn't matter. Event center, library. That's, that's how that should blow. That is the proper orange chart. And we have, we have, we have cut that up at this point in time, at least, we're going to get to the event center. That's my disappointment. We are not allowed. We are not allowing an orange chart to flow as it should. Or inserting, trying to insert ourselves as commissioners that micromanage, that is.
Absolutely not. I do not want to micromanage.
Well, you've been doing it.
I would completely disagree with that. I have not been micromanaging.
Well, that's not the messaging that I'm getting.
I there's no, I observed, I watched how they did their work. I did, I carried some. A few pops things, we ran up and to the bell, got some food. I did not micromanage, absolutely not. If you want to call making one decision now to replace an employee, micromanaging. You can, and that's the only decision that. I have, how people do their jobs, when they come to work, what they do, what their flows are, what their schedules are. You know, not a chance. I can absolutely guarantee you that they don't want me to. I don't micromanage my guys in my in my normal work. You know, so there would be no reason to do that, none.
I I'm just going based on what what I've been, what's been reported.
Sure, and I can sit here and tell you not a problem. I do not, I have no desire to micromanage. Will I be more involved in in what they're doing and they can bounce ideas off me? Absolutely. Do I make a final decision? No.
I can tell you that there's there is at least one organization on a temporary basis that could certainly support or help if we wanted to. I don't know how we go about it. If they reach out and ask, we can have to help my acts would be a law factor.
Those are, that's, I mean.
I don't know how we go about engaging them without.
Well, we have to have an.
Gotta have an R P D.
Can do emergency procurement too.
Yeah, it'd be great.
We have multiple things I want to say, but I'll just keep it brief. Um. We have a resource that we can work with right now. So I don't think there's any need necessarily to go out for an RFP or anything because we have. Nation that I can reach out to and let them know the situation as to what's been going on. I've been kind of giving them bits and pieces as to we've been going through this transition. And now I can give them the full blown story because it's.
And that'd be awesome. I don't, some way to find it out. I don't.
Be curious to know who reached out though, if that could be shared.
Yeah, I can forward that.
Okay, just to see if it's somebody that we're already working with, maybe on like a smaller scale and if they want to just be more involved. Or who that is, but we do have an international resource that we can.
Jason's got, Jason's got the same one, make sure you had a copy of it too. But it just came, it came like on Thursday.
Another thing too, I just want to say um. And to no fault of Jason, he was transitioning into, so for respect of his time of getting to into a new position. Commissioner Zanker came down and helped us out from like boots level on up into this transition into where we're at right now. So. By no means is there a um authoritative figure telling us what to do and when we need to do it and what we're doing. I would say he started at the very bottom of helping with Hawk and Pop around our building up to helping at all levels. There's definitely a trend of people going to H R and doing finger pointing right now and things and that's fine. Everybody has their right to say why they're frustrated or what's going on, but. We've we've got to figure this out internally. I mean, we've got good people, good positions. We need to figure it out.
Lot of stuff on the table, a lot of air communication, which was all important. I just don't know what would move.
And I can agree, we spent a good portion of that time trying to trying to work that communication side of things. Because you're right, the operations team, they brought up, hey, at midnight, two, three in the morning, they if. They don't know if something's exactly right or what the the client wants. I mean, you have to defer whatever information you have. Don't think you're going to be able to call a salesperson. I mean, you call my cell at two in the morning, I might not answer it. But that, I mean, that would be the same for any of us. You know, whatever's in black and white is what they gotta do. And there are um. There are things that that have to be fixed and that one of them is. Um a clearer path to communication, more people having access to the E B M S program like I referred to. I mean, but those are heavy lifts because. Everybody that works down there knows that the I T infrastructure is a is a challenge at times, not all the time, but at times. So.
Mr. Conley.
Uh Mayor and Commissioners. Greg or sorry Commissioners Zanker, Amanda. Since trust is an issue, that last two weeks where I went down and I talked to a lot of people and I met with you. Amanda, as well as other people, I mentioned a lot that um. The trust of the citizen, trust of the community and trust between each other is compromised and it's something we can't ask for. We're not in a position, we're not even in a position to ask for respect. It's something that we all have to earn. And for everybody at the commission, um. We ran on some of that, that we're going to run into some difficult uh decisions and circumstances. And growing forward and trying to earn that back is very unsettling and very uncomfortable. Commissioners Zanker, would you be open if both of us were. Part of those communications so you don't end up in a silo because some of that integrity pointing obviously has gone towards you. And we gotta get past those type of scenarios if we're going to find that better answer on the other side. And then uh because I have through the subcommittee and things, talked to both sides of the house and had some of those conversations. Maybe we could narrow that gap, but at the end of the day, the job needs to get done. And if we don't start getting events and providing that justified want to the community of entertainment. This fire never gets put out, so to speak. If that makes any sense.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think that's gonna be have to be a different topic at a at a later meeting as far as it is if we're gonna start. Uh doubling up on portfolios if somebody's concerned or not. I think our next next meeting, we can probably put that on. I think. Biggest thing in one of the challenges that we have as far as City of Bismarck and where and the size of our location. Is that there's been many times where we were close to having contracts signed with artists. Or if there was something that was that was that was close, then all of a sudden we get outbid by by somebody else. And you don't have to go very far from the city of Bismarck to find out where that's at. So again, what it does is it comes down to basically dollars and cents. There's many times where. Uh the former director would call me as far as on the uh finance side. And would call Commissioner Zanker as far as trying to get an act in. Um and and you know, take a look at what some of those acts are, you know, at a million plus. Um some of those, you know, we take a look at what um former director would have roughly what some of the tickets would have to be. And then to see if we even try and go out for that. There's some of them that were smaller that I know for sure. That we've lost to um. Other entities that are able to fund it a lot different or have a different funding source to be able to accommodate some of those losses where. We as an event center do not. But I think a lot of it is going to have to come down to. Either our team down there, if we find an outside management team, however. However, we move forward, but understand that a lot of it is dollars and cents and to try and get those acts in, it's going to be. Um a lot of money and a lot of decisions that the city commission itself is going to have to decide. And how it wants to move forward with with those decisions and us as the community gain that trust. Yeah, I've seen all the emails. As far as people complaining about, we don't have any of this, that and the other, but. What are we supposed to do when we get outbid? You know, there's there's got to be a range something or 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 a management team or even. Um the team that's there right now to be able to have some leeway, but we're not going to give any leeway to a lot of that. It has to be black and white. So that's where some of this 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 discussion is going to have to move forward, even with that. If we find a management team that can gonna come in, are they gonna be able to outbid? These other entities for some of these these shows.
Still gonna be based on ticket revenue.
Right, exactly. So I mean. Yeah, we've got some hard hard questions to ask. Then if we do have a management team come in. Then what do we do with the employees and stuff that we have down there in some of those positions? I mean, we that, I mean, we need to figure out, we need to figure out as a city where we want to be and how we want to move forward. And unfortunately, we're in the situation that we're in and now we have to make those tough decisions like Commissioner Conley had mentioned. Well, how do we move forward and what does that look like?
So I can expand and Commissioner Markworth's comment about the uh third party management company. And that question was brought up last Wednesday and there is apprehension about that because typically what they come in and do, the M O is. They fire everybody and then start over once we sign that contract. And that there's some apprehension there and I I said from my perspective. Right now, I we have to, we need to get through the next ninety days and then and then we can take. A look at, I don't know what the commissioner was going to decide whether we replace the director or if we hire a management. I mean, I'd tell you this from a personal perspective, I'm not in favor of third party management, but if that's the way it goes, that's the way it goes. Um, the other thing is, is that I was going to bring that exact thing that Commissioner Markworth just talked about to the last meeting in April. After the the sales team and I, we looked at some things and and um looked at the the scope of what's going on in the big picture. As to what risk the five of us would would agree to take. Not from my perspective, not what I think, but from the five of us. Because that's not a decision a commissioner can make. I completely agree with you, Mayor. That's, hey, if we're going to change the path. Of what the the event center has done over the last ten, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen years, then we, the five of us, need to make that decision.
Agreed.
Not one person, but be to be able to make that decision, we need to be able to understand. What those options are.
No.
And we couldn't, we the the team could not put that together to have it on that that next week's commission.
No, I.
So that's why, that again, my plan was when I talked to Jason on Friday, which by the way, was it was a day off for all of us. Um that was what I explained to him. That's what this thirty sixty ninety day scenario thing, what I thought we were going to discuss today.
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Connolly, just so that you're aware, if you're going to discuss it, if you delegate a duty to two of you, that isn't. That has to be noticed as an open meeting. It has nothing to do with quorum. It's a delegating a duty. So if it goes to more than one person, then those must be noted noticed as open meetings.
Yes, we do that when all that and I remember the. Strategic plan, didn't we notice those meetings?
Um I have to go back and look, it's likely that.
Could be similar to what I've had to hear.
Yeah.
I would think so because those are still.
Just so you know, that's.
Yeah, that's any of the subcommittees or things like the special assessment task force where there were two commissioners. Um they were noticed because that's what I relied on in order to attend as a citizen, so that would make sense. And that's fine, I'm. I merely suggested it not as wanting. To usurp anybody's um. Uh portfolio or anything, but when there's trust issues like when I mentioned the medical is is that. There we're always short staffed, we're. There's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of things that happen, but the only way to define those differences and. It's not to um. Oversee somebody, it's merely for the sake of this is how we can maintain. Those higher trust levels um that we're trying to earn back is we just don't let. Each other be alone, so to speak, um when every time somebody's alone, then there's a question of integrity. That's just not a good way for any of us to function going forward when we're trying to overcome such a big mountain. That like Commissioners Zanker said, that's been going on a decade to eighteen years. Um we need to narrow a gap as quickly as we can. We need to establish the. Three sixty reviews, what's that look like? The uh terms of agreement, some of those things that came out of the subcommittee. Um that will help us put some uh. Scope to our motions going forward, whether that's management company or if the commission chooses to go another way. We need to definitely increase our learning curve and take those steps at a very rapid rate.
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Cogly, I think, you know, that's one of the things that we need to see at our table is. Some of those um topics that 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 subcommittee had found for us to be able to start. Working on and approving those at the table, basically until we get event center stuff situated straightened out. Basically, the commission itself is micromanaging.
And Commissioner Markward, I would agree with that. The other concern that I have going forward because right now we can't afford to wait to see what June unfolds. And part of the um thought process like with either you or me would be is that. In order to respect um transitions and things. If it is different people at the seat, it's good for some people um that aren't on the uh. Part of that question, that they are the ones down there, so um. Like in Commissioners Zanker's case with uh it being his portfolio. He has two more years, there's not a question where there might be a question of some stability when the election comes around. And it's not to bring politics into the conversation, it's just a reality with how our republic works.
Well, Commissioner Conley, I. You know, as far as that's concerned, we need to make a decision regardless of what whatever that may be. I think what we need to do is find out what. Um what our next steps are for thirty to sixty ninety days and how we want to see that moving forward. Make sure we close that gap up a little bit, but at least give a little bit of guidance. And then I'm sure we'll see a lot more of this on the next full. Uh agenda for regular city commission as well.
Yeah, maybe that's what we're gonna do instead of bringing it today, we put it on next week's agenda for the next thirty sixty and then we have discussion.
Um yeah, I guess I just wanted to touch on a few things, uh but um. To Commissioner Connolly's point, um and maybe it doesn't work for there to be like a second commissioner involved. In the portfolio, but I think that now that some of the transitions that are happening are. You know, through fruition, we have a city administrator, that sort of thing. I think that there's a huge amount of value in. Kind of how the mayor spoke to letting staff participate in those conversations. From the other departments so that we aren't siloed where like if there's a conversation that is happening down at the event center and it involves. You know, operations and getting people to work together or moving forward, that admin be included in that meeting. If there's a. If there's a conversation about contracts or anything legality that legal gets included in that conversation. I feel like a lot of my director meetings that I have one on one with my director, they will still involve. Dimitri or involve Leanne or involve Jason. And I think that then that would help us prevent this like. Where two people's takeaway from the meeting is entirely different. Commit what Commissioners Zanker took away from that meeting and what staff took away from that meeting. Obviously, sounds like it was entirely like perceived entirely different. And if we would have had admin or H R. Included in that conversation, then we wouldn't be like having this conversation of like, okay, well, what happened at that meeting? Um I so I think that there's a lot of value there where we're, you know, not siloing the department and trying to. Keep kind of that supportive staff um fourth floor, you know, people included in the conversations that. That maybe it makes sense for them to be at. Um I think Jason has made a point of saying that he's. At at in his role as city administrator, he's very willing to meet people where they are. And I think we should hold him to that. I think that including him in some of that stuff could could be really helpful. Um and then I guess my other question would be when we talk second party or sorry, third party management or that sort of thing. At at one point I had a conversation, maybe with Janelle, but like what would it look like if we, you know, brought in some version of. If whether it's third party. whether it's third party management or whether it's an individual, I don't know what it looks like, but to have a consultant that comes in that has an understanding of the industry, like a third party management company does, and they look at, you know, what, the issues that the committee found. And they, you know, sit in that director role and see what's, what's going on down there. And they kind of come back with like a recommendation, like they, it's like almost a consultation as to like, what should change and when and kind of create that plan for us, because if I learned anything from that committee, it's that like, I'm not an expert in that industry and I don't know which problems should be fixed immediately, which ones are gonna take more time, which are impossible. I, I just wonder if there's like a step we can take that like helps us, you know, make it into steps instead of trying to like leap, if that makes sense.
Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Cleary, I, I know what you're trying to, to say, and I, I think that's one of the things that a person could do. But then with any of the consultants that come in, then you better be prepared, or the city commission better be prepared to fund that recommendation and what that is. That's the biggest thing when we come in with all these consultants, is that, that comes with a dollar amount. And that dollar amount, are we, and we, we take a look at that with Condrey, we take a look at that with other, um, uh, consultants that, that we've had, like, come in. What is that dollar amount, and are we willing or can we afford to be able to do that? Now, it might just give us some good next steps. There, there was, and there was more than once where former director and his team came into the budget committee and wanted all these different consultants to come in. The biggest thing is what is that cost? And since they're an enterprise fund, that's where it comes out of, and if they can afford to do that or not. Some of the stuff was just, um, there was, uh, software and stuff out there that we could utilize. And, you know, we tried to go a couple of different ways. But again, if you want consultants to come in and tell you what to do, be prepared to see what that dollar amount is and to be able to push that forward. That's the biggest thing that we need to understand, is when they come in, they come up with their recommendations. Are we gonna follow those recommendations and are we willing to put that dollar amount on that consultant to help with that and what that may look like? And it might be just an exercise that we need to do. I'm not saying that we, we don't, but we need to be prepared for that dollar amount. And are we ready to move forward with it that way?
Mr. Conley.
I know we have a hard stop at ten on this meeting, so I'll just, uh, finish with, uh, during the, um. Two weeks after the subcommittee concluded, um, part of the questions that I had for employees or others is, is that would there be any comfort level to where there would be multiple people, um, CC'd in on emails, um. Between the Fifth Street offices and the event center. So that we could avoid some of those silo communications that, um, even when good. Uh, it's good, but then when challenged, um, seemed to be hurting us more than they're helping us. And would that be a way to, um. Help us get from where we are now to that next step, is that everybody, there's eyes on as many of those communications as possible. And I'll finish with that. Appreciate talking to you.
I think it, Mayor and Commissioner, if I may just, oh, I think that one of the things, yes, we do need communication. Anytime that Commissioners Zanker, um, if there was anything that dealt with his portfolio that had finance or, um, legal, uh, we take a look at the, the contracts that were brought up during the subcommittee. We actually had gone down, uh, Commissioners Zanker, uh, myself, uh, my finance director. Uh, Jason as the acting, uh, city administrator, and I believe legal is down there as well. We have those conversations on how we need to do those best steps. So, um, you know, as far as any outside meetings where, you know, none of us were, were involved. Um, you know, there's some of those, like I said, there, there's some, but anytime that I have an issue, that's gonna be a personnel issue. Uh, city admin understands that and also HR and, and legal. So, you know, when we go into those, that we have, um, you know, some of those, uh, bases covered. Because as Commissioner Cleary said, we're not all privy to, or, uh, that's not our main focus or, or job in life. And we don't understand some of those different, um, dynamics of, um, of how that moves forward. But I, I really think that we need to get a handle on this to help that event center and, and move forward.
We have like four minutes.
Yeah, so let's just, I think I would recommend that we just put it on the thirty, sixty, ninety day, look ahead stuff on next Tuesday's commission agenda, and we work forward from there.
We can do that, and Jason, can you forward Amanda all that, that other company that accepts us information? And I would like. I'm gonna ask Jason that he makes sure he stays in contact with Amanda on a certain basis.
Yeah.
And I know we have meeting schedules.
We're scheduled Thursday at nine or ten, just to start talking about things like budget twenty twenty five.
Well, for all of us, I mean, actually, the two of you should talk about how we could maybe start developing thirty, sixty, ninety day process and future work, because that's really not. Those things should come to the commission to be able to make a decision on after it's been vetted to a certain degree.
Do we need, do we need, does a full city commission need to have a meeting with all of the event center staff to talk or discuss some of the issues that they may or may not have, start moving forward, so we all are on the same page?
My only concern there is some of those, when they're HR related, there's a reason they're confidential until they're disclosed to be public. Because they, you know, people don't always want to share what they're feeling, when, and if it's an open meeting, that would be a difficult thing.
Yeah, but I, I mean.
So I'm not saying it's not a bad thing, I'm just saying it's.
I just think there's a lot of stuff that being out there that is either being pointed by social media or, or, or other industries. That is getting pushed way out one side or the other, and I think we just need to have a conversation and maybe us moving forward the way we are, it might help us on that.
I mean, I understand where you're going, I just think you've got, you know, respect and confidentiality. Yes, sorry, I can't see you.
That's all right, Mayor and Commissioners, um, I, I think, uh. It could be fruitful, kind of like, uh, what some of the, um, very, uh, the, say, executive sessions, those type of things. Um, even if it was an open meeting, if it was one topic and one topic specifically. And at the end of the day, it's, um, doing right by the citizen and the community is. We all have to be by the same measurement, and we need to get the job done regardless of how we go through that. And if it was everybody, um, let's have that discussion on that level. Because that's bigger than all of us in this situation.
Well, we are going to adjourn, because we're at a hard stop, where we're at, moving to specific topic to our regular commission meeting. Over this week. Thank you.